I could have everyone's attention, please. We could all rise and stand for the pledge. Mr. Naum, can you lead us to the pledge?
I'd like to lead this pledge. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
You have a moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces. Thank you. Walter.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Oops. Okay, Sharon, you're up to first. Sharon Chamberlain, 21 Dartmouth.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, members of Town Council, Mayor Basz, and all my band and music family. Thank you again for showing your support. Last week, we went to a Board of Ed meeting. I'm sorry.
What's your name and record?
I'm sorry, you want to decide?
Go ahead. Name is for the record.
Oh, Sharon Chamberlain.
Sorry.
We went to the Board of Ed meeting last week. We filled the room with at least 150 of the same people. Board of Ed graciously listened to each and every one of our comments. We had over 30 speakers. So if you'll bear with me a little bit, I'm just going to tell you a couple of the things that we had. Again, I'm Sharon Chamberlain. I had been a resident of New Milford for 31 years. Last Tuesday, it's a Board of Ed meeting. I was joined by over 100 other parents, students, alumni students, music educators, percussion techs, and others to represent the New Milford High School music program. The Board of Ed graciously allowed over 30 people to give comment to programs that mean so much to them personally now or have in the past. The support the Board of Ed gave us, considering the daunting task they have with the current budget, was nothing short of the meaning of what community is. I wish to thank them again. I've had children in this school system for 23 years now, and 20 of those years I've been a volunteer in this music program in the school, starting at Hill and Plains, Saranoke, middle school, and now I'm ending my career this year at New Milford High School. Our students involved represent New Milford so well and are deserving of our support. My understanding is the Board of Ed has been in talks with the Town Council concerning funds the town may be receiving in excess of what we thought we might be getting. The most recent budget reductions details indicate the programs, classroom and practical arts, et cetera, are all slated to be cut. There was not, some of them weren't just losing some money. We are going to lose our winter guard and our winter percussion programs with those cuts. And 50% of our field trip line item, that's not field trips for those kids, it is part of their curriculum at New Milford High School. They go to competitions. Yes, they're outside of the classroom, but that's all part of, in their written curriculum. And these kids put in hours and hours. They get one month off a year, July, but most of that time, during that time, those kids are out practicing their instruments, getting their drills ready, so they're ready for the fall season. This would really devastate this group. These kids are involved in some activities related to it, and they work hard and get ready for that fall. Speaking of that, September 21st, we have our home show. Come out and see these kids there and see the other schools that join this community. I'd like to read you something that was shared with our group by another band program in Connecticut, the Suddington High School. So, here's the big deal about high school marching band. Students spend hours upon hours working to perfect a show for performance that will last around eight minutes. Each performance is a big deal. If someone has a bad 20 seconds, it can wreak havoc on the entire band. If someone is confused or not quite sure of the next move, there's no opportunity to call timeout or get clarification. The band gets seven to eight minutes to showcase what they've been working on. They don't get four quarters, two halves, or nine innings, just a few minutes. If someone isn't feeling well, someone twists their ankle or gets knocked on their rear, they can't call timeout and ask for a sub. The show must go on. After the performance is over, not one performer will have their name in the paper or get special recognition publicly for their outstanding performance that week. Everyone works hard, day in and day out, for the team, the group, knowing that they will not be singled out for special recognition. All the work is done for the good of the group. That's extremely awesome. Hug the band kid, or at least give them a high five after their next performance. Go band! And looking at this room, these are the faces of the band. So, I'm hoping we are going to hear some good news tonight, and that you'll be able to relieve some of these burdens that the Board of Ed has to work on tonight, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Tom O'Brien, please.
For the record, Tom O'Brien, 134 Wellsville Avenue. I'm speaking to item five regarding the school board budget. I'd like to share our conversation I had recently with a local friend who's a real estate agent in town. She happened to mention to me that she was working with a young couple who had a growing family. They'd grown out of their house, and they were looking for a larger place. And the real estate agent just casually said to me, "So I'm showing them properties just over the town line, in Bridge Ward, in Roxbury, Washington, so that they can be close to New Milford, but so they can send their kids to quote, 'good schools.'" And I found that, I found that comment shocking, but not surprising, actually. I mean, since I talked to other real estate agents, and they kind of all shook their head and said, "Yeah, we can't really recommend New Milford schools in Washington." I'm sorry to say that, because that was not my experience 20 years ago when I moved to New Milford. I moved here, I got a job in Newtown, I was living down the south, and moved up here with my wife and my then-one-year-old son. We looked at a lot of different towns, and we chose to buy a house in New Milford. We still live in that same house, and it's almost completely restored about one more month ago. We chose this town for the quality of life, for its affordability, and, most importantly, for the quality of the schools. The real estate agent that showed us around, she had nothing bad to say about New Milford. Our schools compared favorably with everybody around us, and that was what I felt. So what happened? And what happened was, it seemed to me, every year in the subsequent years, from my perspective, the Board of Ed would put forth a fair budget, and if there was an increase, it barely kept up with inflation. And we know that most of the inflation in the school budget is providing medical care to employees. So they would put a fair budget out, and it would come to the mayor, come to the Town Council, and it would get cut. Year after year, it would get cut. And then the next year, it would get cut again with no acknowledgement for the damage that was done in previous years. So, to me, this is, this is death by a thousand cuts. We can't pretend that we're cutting away fat. We're cutting away the bone and the muscle to our school system. Finally, I just want to share one thing that was very disappointing. When I read in the newspaper that the high school band program was facing a $25,000 budget. I was a band parent, my son was a musician, the music program was what kept him, kept him out of that every morning and going to school. And we, despite the cuts and the funding challenges, we consider ourselves lucky to be in a town that values this music program so much, so much. And if you travel around the state, New Milford's marching band is well-known every place. And how were we able to sustain this success despite funding shortages? I think two reasons. We have great teachers. The last two Teachers of the Year were banned, were banned instructors. And the other thing that is true, the band parents. I only got five minutes. Only got five minutes. The other, even more important is the banned parents. And I'm sure there's some in here. I've been involved in a lot of volunteer activities, a lot of, I've even started nonprofits. I have never worked with a harder-working group of people than the New Milford Marching Band banned parents. And you know what they do best of all is fundraising. Like, when I, the four years that we were, that we were band parents, every month we were, we were fundraising and raising money to support this program, to booster this program that wasn't funded properly enough. And, you know, we'd be selling cookies and pies and plants and wreaths and ads and stuff I can't even remember. I'm sure you guys know what we're selling these days. But I can tell you one thing. By junior year, I'd call my sister in upstate New York, and she wouldn't be answering the phone anymore. And she didn't admit, until after Jake graduated, that she was tired of getting calls to buy pies and cookies and stuff that she didn't need anymore. So, so I just want to say that these band parents are pulling their own weight and more. And to ask them to take a cut after everything they've been doing, I think is unconscionable. If you're asking them to take a huge cut in funding, you're really scraping the bottom of the barrel at this point. So I'm just asking you to stop scraping, restore the funding cuts, and put the money back. Thank you very much.
Tom, I just have a point of clarification. You had mentioned that...
You want me to add something?
Yeah, please. You'd mentioned that the council...
Well, this was a one-way conversation.
No, because you made a statement, so I just want to be clear. You mentioned that the council had cut the budget less than the year prior on several occasions. Do you happen to know what years there were?
I'm speaking in general terms with five minutes to speak, Tom, so I'm sure you can find out.
Just because by law, Tom, we're not allowed to fund the Board of Education lower than the year prior. So every year, they're at least funded the same or get an increase.
I didn't say you funded it. I think you're kind of playing with some words here.
Well, you said cuts.
What I said is, what I remember, over the course of 20 years, and there may have been a year or two when, when the budget was approved, but, but in general, the pattern was, was to take what the Board of Education proposed as a starting point and half away and reduce that. That's what I recall. If I'm incorrect, I'm sure you, you're going to find out, and you can let everybody know about it.
And you're aware the actual cuts are done by the Board of Education, not the council?
The decisions, you force them to make the cuts. You say, "We're only going to give you this much, you got to find a way," like, I think this year, to educate these kids with a million dollars less than what they determined they needed. So, yeah, they have to figure out where to spend it, but you're the one that tells them to make do with less.
Well, no, actually, the way it happens is the Town Council makes a recommendation to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance, in this case, added $400,000. They then make a recommendation to the voters of New Milford. So the voters of New Milford decide it, just to be clear. Thank you.
Sure.
Who's next? Shaylin, did you want to speak? Come on down.
For the record, Shaylin Baumgartner, 21 Catherine Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Since I spoke at the Board of Education meeting last week, I have spoken to current and former students, townspeople, and others about the school district programs. There's a question I've heard for which I don't have an answer, and I'm hoping you can help me out. The Town Council has not responded to the state's education cost sharing funding. Why is this? This funding would solve much of the budget cuts that your constituents care so deeply about, that they filled the room last week and they have again this week. High school music programs tag athletics at the high school. With no exceptions, these are programs that give young townspeople places to grow, places to learn, places to have fun, places to understand what it means to be part of a community. Places to do things that we can all be proud of. As just one example, I have a friend, am I allowed to name for anyone?
Absolutely.
Ryan Thibodeau. The band's front ensemble section leader this past year is also an Eagle Scout. His project was building a fire pit for respectful retirements of U.S. flags at the VFW on Avery Road. He cited New Milford High School marching band as one of his major learning spaces in terms of leadership skills. Many students in the programs that I named go on to become Eagle Scouts, Girl Scouts recognized with gold awards, scholarship recipients, college graduates. Mayor Basz, I remember how honored I was to see you at New Milford's winter percussion show. I want you to know what happened after I graduated high school. I applied to 11 colleges. My college essay was about my roles in the high school band as a leader and a mentor. I was accepted by 10 of these schools, and I was offered scholarships at all of them. Since graduating from New Milford, I have yet to be rejected from a job or an internship. Just like my friend Ryan, I know these are all opportunities that I would not trade for the world. The Board of Education needs the state cost sharing funding to properly support New Milford's youth. Council members, please don't wait any longer. Let us all work together to make this happen.
Chrissy Woolley.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. We moved to New Milford...
Just your name and record.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Chrissy Woolley. We moved to New Milford less than a year ago. All of the, of all the surrounding areas and surrounding towns, we considered settling New Milford one of our hearts. The culture, the people we talked to when we visited, the community pride, the town's beauty were all factors, but the decision was largely driven by the fact that New Milford High School really stood above the rest. Academics were definitely a priority, however, it was this town's support of music and the arts that ultimately made New Milford our chosen new home. Our son's passion is his music, and Mr. Sizdek's program really seemed a great fit for him. We were dumbfounded at the possibility that this program's curricular offerings could be in jeopardy. We left our former community in search of better opportunities because they didn't support the arts as much as this town did. And this being his talent and his passion, and just to know that the possibility exists that we are once again facing such a loss so soon after we just came to this community for that reason is heart-wrenching. So we pray that you continue to support the music programs that brought us here. As a curricular subject, music actually is quite unique. In an age of growing global connection among different ethnicities and cultures, understanding other languages and being able to communicate effectively is crucial. And in high school, students are expected to fulfill foreign language requirements. Music is actually a universal language that is instantly relatable and translatable among fellow musicians across the world, regardless of their nationality or origin. It binds those who understand it, bridging together people of diverse backgrounds from all corners of our planet, who might not otherwise have come together without this mutual passion that connects them. The thing about music is that it teaches many more values than just the notes they play. Among them, discipline, coordination, teamwork, memorization, and time management skills. They have to know how to juggle their studies and other subjects, and they have to know how to fit their practice time in so they can be the best of the best. Because in music, anything less than perfect isn't an option, because everyone will know if you play their own notes for the National Anthem. So, it evokes emotion and nurtures empathy. Progressing through levels of skill and intensity keeps students engaged and curious, and keeps them on individualized trajectories of growth and accomplishment. Of course, it is fun and can be relaxing, but it requires hard work, true dedication, preparation, and commitment in order to achieve the level of professionalism that these students master. This does not happen by accident. Cutting these funds takes away their competitions. These are events that help them set goals and growth benchmarks. They make this town proud. I was humbled by the way the residents of this town admired it. They represent this community's pride and spirit, they really do. That simply would not be possible without the training and the rigor that this investment makes in their education. Another thing I do want to add is that there are a vast number of careers in music. While it may not be evident to the general public, this all starts at an education level. I ask you to please reevaluate any cuts that you plan to make to the Board of Education and by default to these music programs in this school system. It takes great pride to rebuild programs like these. It takes years to build them. And the talents and skills can only develop over time from an elementary level. This isn't something that you can jump into when the funds are there. Losing this financial backing can cause a landslide in these programs, and the reputation that New Milford has taken so many years to build and to these efforts.
Albert Behrs, please.
My name is Albert Behrs. Anyway, I would just like to say a few words in regards to the program that I think is being treated unfairly. I realize it's not the Town Council who does the cutting for specific areas, but it is the Town Council who makes the big cut. And then the Board of Ed, what are they going to do? Many times, it's not their fault. I'd just like to give you a little history biographical quickly. I came here 52 years ago, in 1967, to start the program. There was no program at New Milford High School. I started with 25 kids, and when I retired back around 1991, it's 2001, excuse me. I taught music, not math. Anyway, 2001, you know, I left a pretty healthy program of 110 students or thereabouts in the band. I had a jazz ensemble. I had an orchestra that was doing quite well. And we, you know, as many of you know, the musicals are often supported by the instrumental program. After I retired, the people who succeeded me, there were two band directors, but Mr. Sizdek, when he came on the scene, I'm a super-duper fan of Mr. Sizdek. And you've heard a lot of very good descriptions of what it is to be a member of a musical unit of this type, or any musical unit, whether it's choral or instrumental. And it really takes a lot of work that the average person doesn't understand. And sometimes that average person would be the first one to scream and yell if something doesn't look quite right. What's going on? And as Mrs. Chamberlain, so, it was wonderful what the comments about Suddington High School saying that there's no such thing as sending the reserves in or taking one out because of somebody being injured or whatever. It is what it is, and you just have to live with it. So you just hope that things go very well. I had four children myself, they're all grown now, and all four of them... ...in respective college bands. And they loved it. I had one daughter, and she was the one music major. She actually ended up getting her master's in performance from Manhattan School of Music and played in New York for a while on French horn. And she's now the choral director at the Shabog Valley High School. So, this program is all-encompassing, and it goes right down to the beginners, that begin in Saranoke now through Scotticoke. These kids have something to look up to and to look forward to. And they have a wonderful program right at the moment. It's unbelievably, just, just very, very outstanding. And it isn't just cutting the high school program, the funds, it's also cutting all the way down the line, because people are going to lose interest if they feel they don't want to be supported, the people who are responsible are not supporting their endeavors. So, I really feel strongly that whatever funds are available, and I understand there might be a considerable amount of funds available to give back to the Board of Ed because of the state returning money to the town of New Milford, I certainly hope that that is used wisely and will support a great program, because it won't be a great program, it's going to be a sad situation should this be diminished.
I just got pinged by somebody watching at home. There's no audio on the live video feed. Can we fix that?
Working on it. Working on it right now.
Okay, just so we know.
Okay. Megan Bird. Excuse me, Megan Bird.
I'm sorry. I'm shy. Megan Bird, 2 Carlson Road. I had no idea what I was going to say, except that I was here in support of returning any funds, as the mayor suggested that this Town Council would do if this should be the case, that we would have extra funds. Back in March, that was brought up, and I fully expect everybody on this Town Council will support that, until I heard some comments by one of the Town Council members trying to twist what our, Tom O'Brien had said. He did not say this Town Council made cuts lower than the other budget. He said they made cuts to proposed Board of Ed budgets. Our members of our Board of Ed worked tirelessly to put together a budget that is both fiscally responsible and also serves the needs of our community. And every year, this Town Council cuts that budget before it goes to Board of Finance. Yes, you're correct, it's before it goes to Board of Finance, but they cut that budget. The Town Council cuts that proposed budget. That's it. Goes to Board of Finance, they put a little bit back. Yay, that's great, they put a little bit back. You know what? If you really don't want to take the hate for cutting the budget, don't do it. Let the town vote on the budget that the Board of Ed put through and adopt it. If the town fails it, the town fails it. But if they approve it, it tells you exactly where we stand. Thank you.
Amy, my eyes are getting very tiny because your writing is very tiny. Amy, all right, come on down.
Amy Fotopoulos, 10 Chatfield Road.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome. You'll get it one of these days. Okay, I'd like to provide comment on the fifth item as well on tonight's agenda, as it pertains to the Board of Ed budgets for fiscal year 1920. As some of you know, I attended many of the budget hearings, Town Council meetings, Board of Finance meetings, and Board of Education meetings and special hearings earlier this year, where the 2019-2020 Board of Ed budgets were discussed and approved for public referendum. Many of you also know I wasn't very happy with the budgets that went to vote, but I'm happy that we passed something. Anyway, I distinctly recall discussions earlier in the year where select Town Council members justified the recommendations to slash the Board of Education budget based on estimates from the governor, which indicated decreased ECS funding. I also distinctly recall during the March 7th Town Council budget deliberations, Councilman Sizmansky, I hope I said your name properly, stated, "If the ECS money are not reduced, the $444,831 that it will then be used by the Board of Education," just so we're clear. So, today, I'm very pleased that New Milford will actually receive $400,000 more in ECS funding than originally anticipated. That's wonderful. As these dollars were intended to be used for educational purposes, they must be used to support the BOE budget for next year. And since the budget the Town Council put forward and recommended did not factor in these funds, and since the mayor and Town Council discussed in good faith transferring said funds to the Board of Education budget, I hope that you will do the right thing, be accountable, and restore those funds where they rightly belong. Because this infusion of funds, as you've heard tonight, as you've heard at, hopefully at the Board of Education meetings, is sorely needed and will greatly help to defray the expenses of some of these needed programs. Cuts hurt our schools, they hurt our children, and overall, they hurt our town. I hope you will do the right thing. We are watching. Thank you.
Christine Taylor, please.
Thank you for your audience. My name's Christine Taylor. I'm here to support, or I'm here to voice my support for breweries, wineries, and distilleries to be allowed to work together with food trucks in our town. This is my first time ever coming to something like this, and I am also brand-new to town. I just moved here in December. I really love this town so far. I came here to teach at the high school. In fact, a couple of my students are in the audience right now. And in addition to working at the high school, I decided to get a job at, who's a tonic river brewing company. I did it not because I wanted money, or not even because of the beer, I swear. At least not completely. But I wanted to meet people in my town, and I loved it in this town. I just didn't know many people outside of my students, and I'm not going to hang out with 16-year-olds on the weekends. So, working at the breweries really helped me meet that goal. It's not just a bar, it's not just somewhere you go to drink or people go to drink, it's a community gathering space, and it's a really special place for those of you who have never been there. Whether it's a rainy day and customers are gathered around a board game near the fire, or it's a beautiful sunny day and everyone's outside playing cornhole, listening to live music, it's just a great place for our community to gather. And as a beer tender, I pour drinks for everyone, from nurses, truck drivers, other teachers, employees from Kimberly-Clark, accountants and businessmen who are just stopping by on their way through town. And they're there for the brewery experience. They're there to taste the artistry of Dave Littlefield and the great work that he does, but also to experience togetherness and good conversation. And there's a number of people here today who are in support of that. And we're all here because we want this special place to succeed as a business, and food trucks would help the brewery. Every time I'm working, there's at least a half a dozen customers who ask, "Where's the food menu?" And, you know, I have to tell them, "Well, we don't have a food menu," because that's not a typical thing that breweries do. So the breweries in the area, they typically serve their beer, and then they have a food truck outside. And there's people who just want to grab a quick bite while they're stopping through. There's people who just want something to snack on while they're hanging out and having a good time. And they don't want to wait necessarily for delivery, they don't always want to think ahead and bring their own food. been there. Whether it's a rainy day and customers are gathered around a board game near the fire, or it's a beautiful sunny day and everyone's outside playing cornhole, listening to live music, it's just a great place for our community to gather. And as a beer tender, I pour drinks for everyone, from nurses, truck drivers, other teachers, employees from Kimberly-Clark, accountants and businessmen who are just stopping by on their way through town. And they're there for the brewery experience, they're there to taste the artistry of Dave Littlefield and the great work that he does, but also to experience togetherness and good conversation. And there's a number of people here today who are in support of that. And we're all here because we want this special place to succeed as a business, and food trucks would help the brewery. Every time I'm working, there's at least a half a dozen customers who ask, "Where's the food menu?" And, you know, I have to tell them, "Well, we don't have a food menu," because that's not a typical thing that breweries do. So the breweries in the area, they typically serve their beer, and then they have a food truck outside. And there's people who just want to grab a quick bite while they're stopping through, there's people who just want something to snack on while they're hanging out and having a good time. And they don't want to wait necessarily for delivery, they don't always want to think ahead and bring their own food, they just want to try something quick and then keep having their beer. So again, I sincerely think that food trucks would help the brewery, customers have come to expect that, and you know this is important to me, because it's my first day of summer vacation as a teacher, and I'm here. So thank you for listening, and I'll sit down now, but thank you.
Hi, good evening, I'm Rosanne Petrusso. I'm a resident, a parent in this town, and I'm also an educator in a nearby town. I didn't come here to debate the funding tonight, however, I do want to say that I don't think we should be proud of keeping education funding at or close to the prior year's levels, when the cost of operating expenses goes up year to year. I'm not happy about the rise in electric rates, but I'm not going to turn off the heat despite my family. Tonight, you have an opportunity to do the right thing for our children of New Milford. I believe the boards of any town, especially ours, should work together to do what's in the best interest of all citizens. Hopefully, tonight's the opportunity, tonight the opportunity to work cooperatively will be seized. During budget season, the Board of Ed recommended budget created by a team of professional educators who understand the needs of our students was drastically cut for the second year in a row. Our schools are continuously expected to do more for less, which causes our students to be the losers, due to missed opportunities, whatever those might be, such as classroom support, services, and programs for all students. One of the things we need to keep in mind is that we need to teach to the edges of our population, so that's the struggling learners, and that's the learners who are higher achieving. So the schools need to be able to offer a variety of programs to meet those needs, and I believe they do a good job doing that right now, and would hate to see any of that have to be cut. During budget season, part of the rationale to cut the Board of Ed budget was that there was a reduction in ECS funding anticipated. We now know that that reduction didn't come to fruition. I ask that you take the right step toward working for our kids by restoring the ECS funds to the Board of Ed to reduce the unnecessary burden on them in our schools, so we don't need to see programs cut and children lose. Let's set our kids up for success tonight.
Steve?
Good evening, Steve Kleppman, 12 Evergreen Lane. I didn't come to talk about the band, but I just wanted to say municipalities are in competition for parents and for population in an area that's seeing decreases in populations. It's a fine line between fiscal prudence and the perception of not valuing education, so just keep that in mind. I came to talk about beer, so that's why. I'm all in favor of the proposed ordinance to allow food trucks. I think New Milford's needed an outdoor gathering place for a long time. It seems everywhere you go in town requires you to get there by car, so everything's, you get in your car, go to your destination, you hop back in your car, and you go home or something. It's nice to have a place where you see activity, vibrancy, it'd be great if the rest of the downtown had that same attitude, but it's great to have a place like Husaton River Brewery, which is bringing in people, it's active, you know, most weekends and several nights during the week, so I hope you support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, help me out here, Red Cedar Drive.
Hello, my name is Michelle Stalwes, 24, Red Cedar Drive. I would like to comment about the transfer to the education budget of the additional $433,000 in state awarded education cost sharing funds. This amount is the difference between what the town originally expected to receive and what it was actually awarded to New Milford by the state a few weeks ago. In the March 7th, 2019 Town Council meeting, during which the council members discussed the town and education budgets, Councilman Sizemansky stated that if the ECS monies are not reduced by the state, then those monies will then be used by the BOE via a transfer from the town. That's on the YouTube video. As parents, we try to teach our kids about honesty, fairness, and ethics by modeling behavior that exemplifies these concepts. We only make promises that we intend to keep, and when the time comes to make good on a promise, we keep it, even if it has become difficult to do so. To not keep our promises is to teach children not to trust adults, and further to teach them that being untruthful is okay. This money was awarded to the town by the state for the purpose of educating New Milford students. The time has come for you to keep your promise and transfer the totality of the ECS monies to the education budget. To not do so is unfair and disingenuous. Be the role models of fairness and truthfulness that the children of New Milford deserve. Transfer the ECS funds to the BOE, please. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Ken Rickubner, Sherman, resident. I just wanted to say I'm grateful for the opportunity to be able to voice my concerns as a resident of Sherman, and I certainly echo the very emotional and heartfelt sentiment shared by a lot of the other residents tonight regarding the funding for the school, but I thought I could offer a little bit of a different perspective. Being from Sherman, as you may be aware, we have a choice of high schools, it's roughly half a dozen high schools to go to, and as you also may be aware, Sherman School is fairly small. And I'm the father of two boys, my older son Sloan has just finished a fantastic first year as a freshman at New Milford High School. And I wanted to mention that going from a school that's pre-K through eight, that is in total smaller than his freshman class at New Milford High School, is a big adjustment. And it's not a natural progression, and we had originally been on a track to look at Chapag High School up in Washington, but we were swayed by the reputation specifically of the music program at New Milford High School, and it certainly turned out to be every bit as good as the reputation had preceded it. So I think our tuition to the town of New Milford is in the neighborhood of a million bucks a year into your budget, and I know that you're struggling with an infrastructure that's a fixed cost and dwindling enrollment. At least we represent, my son and his friends, I can say that we maybe 98% chose to go to New Milford because of the reputation of the music program, and I'm here tonight to ask for your help. Obviously, it's the Board of Ed that makes the final decision on where the funds go, but I'm here to appeal to you for help in not forcing their hand in potentially impacting this music program that has been so tremendously beneficial to my son. And I can also mention that there are several students at Sherman, graduating students at Sherman School now, that are going to New Milford next year because of my son Sloan and his efforts to spread the word about how wonderful the music program has been for him. I don't know how many students he needs to get to get a free toaster, but... So thank you for any help that you can offer in not forcing the Board of Ed to make those cuts.
Thank you.
Rabbi Ari Rosenberg, I am the rabbi of Temple Shalom, but I'm not here in that capacity. I'm here as a parent of two students in the educational program here, and as someone who loves this town. My family moved to this town about, I think it was five years ago this week, actually, and this town has really embraced my family, and my kids are absolutely thriving right now, in no small part due to the school system that we have here, which I think is one of the most attractive features that we have in this town. And the crown jewel of our school system, honestly, is the music programs that we have here. They're not extracurricular programs, they are curricular programs. Kids are learning skills, they're learning leadership, they're learning how to be part of a team, and I think even more important than that, it boosts their self-confidence and their pride in their school system and their town and town governance, and I think it's that kind of confidence that really helps them do better in all of their other academic endeavors. I think those who served in bands and orchestras and percussion groups throughout their lives are grateful for that experience and what it did to help them in their careers as all kinds of things, from lawyers to rabbis. And, you know, personally, it did a ton for me. I love this town, I know everyone in service to this community loves this town, and I think we need to be investing in the future of this town. I'm in the process of looking to purchase a house sometime in the next year or so. There are dozens of houses right now that are foreclosed or are being sold for less than they were purchased for, and we need to be drawing more people to this town to fill those houses. And one way that we do that is by investing in the educational program, by investing in the use of our town. I can't quit while I'm ahead, but I just want to put in a side note that I'm also in support of food trucks.
Allison, oops, there you go. Standing room only outside, in case anyone didn't know. Allison Seidel, oh, I didn't realize there are this many people in here, so it's always hard to follow Rabbi Ari, but I will do my best. First, make a request that for a meeting like this, maybe we could meet at the community center next time, because it's really hot and hard to hear, and it would be nice to sit down after working all day and doing other unenviable things after work. But I'm also in support of food trucks, but that's not why I came here. But I am here to ask you to transfer the cost sharing funds to the Board of Education. Our school district is hemorrhaging, and that those funds will help to stop the bleeding. It won't stop it altogether, but I think it will make the extremely difficult job that the Board of Education has in figuring out where to make the cuts a little bit less awful. And as you can tell by the presence here tonight and by the presence of certain people throughout this season, we are all watching how you vote, and we will continue to pay attention to that during the election season, and when we see that there are people in our votes and as our voices, to make change happen so that there are people in positions of power who are demonstrating with their actions, not just their words, that they care about the children and families of this community. Thank you.
It's been a while since I spoke, doesn't sound like this is on. I wasn't going to speak, but, um... Can you hear me? Cindy Davis. So after watching the video of people at the Board of Ed speak and having conversations with Rabbi Ari and with Ken, and I hope that the town council will listen to what is being said and will pay attention to all the people that are here to understand the importance of reinstating the educational cost sharing dollars, so that the music program, the CHAG program, won't be cut. I was an educator as well, so I have that understanding as to what happens for students to be educated. Everything, I'm not going to repeat, because I think everything that was said by the other people, their message was heard, but I am saying, I do hope that you will hear the people and that you will reinstate the ECS funding.
Good evening, council members. Tammy Reardon, 19 Crawford Road, New Milford. I've been in New Milford for 25 years and supported the town and the community in a variety of ways. I felt that it was important tonight to come and voice my thoughts and encourage you to call a public hearing on the ordinance that is being proposed before you to allow food trucks. Dave Littlefield and Husaton River Brewing have created an atmosphere and an experience that truly he strives to embody what New Milford is all about. There are many people that come to the brewery that already know New Milford, they're local to New Milford, one of the surrounding towns. They come to enjoy the brewery and the atmosphere before they go to dinner with their friends or their family. They also come to enjoy an after-dinner drink, after they've already visited the restaurants and the establishments downtown and throughout town, but to find a place to hang and have casual conversation in which they don't have to clean their own homes. It's very important to many people. The other types of visitors we get to New Milford via the brewery is through the Connecticut Beer Trail Passport. This is very similar to the Wine Trail Passport that many people are familiar with. We get visitors at the brewery from places like Wallingford, Enfield, Norwalk, Ranby, New York City, Boston. This experience that they have at the brewery is their introduction to New Milford and the introduction to the atmosphere of commerce that New Milford has. We at the brewery support all of the activities in and throughout New Milford on a regular basis, and we are friendly and happy to provide information to people that are visiting New Milford for the first time. Many of these people that come into the brewery haven't been to New Milford before, and they ask three main questions. How long have you been open? Proud to say, we've been there just over nine months, congratulations, Dave. Do you make your own beer? Yes, of course. And they're offered a tour, if staff and time are available, of the brewing system. The next question they ask, which is the most difficult to answer, is, "Do you serve food?" And you don't? Why don't you have a food truck? All of the breweries I attend to throughout the country have food trucks available to have a quick snack while I'm enjoying a beverage with my friends or my family. I'm not here to spend an hour at a restaurant and grab a beer. I'm here to visit your brewery, visit your town for a short amount of time, and be introduced to all of the other things you have to offer, but I'd like to have something a little more substantial than a couple of chips or pretzels with my beverage. So I'm here tonight to encourage you to call a public hearing on this ordinance that has been proposed and support the passing of that ordinance based on the comments you received at that public hearing. Thank you.
Chris Lakava, 56, Groonze Lane. I would also like to piggyback on what Tammy just said about allowing food trucks at the brewery. I know plenty of people in town that always ask me the same question, when are the food trucks going to be there? Do you want to go on Saturday, on Sunday, Friday night? You have to, you know, order in or whatever. It's really... It's really important to the brewery to allow food trucks to be there. First of all, you don't want people drinking without eating. That goes without saying. People can still order in, they can have companies, restaurants deliver, but it just adds to the atmosphere to have different food trucks, different variety. There are plenty, there are local ones, there are ones that are willing to come from out of town to provide something different, and it's very important to the brewery. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Nudalisch, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I just got a text of the video scan as well, so let me show the clock on the wall.
Is it facing us?
It's all recording and it's all video, so I can get it.
Okay. Thank you. Next is the mayor's remarks. I'll be brief. First, I'd like to congratulate the New Milford High School class of 2019. Job well done. We'd also like to thank the Scaticoke Middle School, 8th grade, which will now be moving into the high school as freshmen. And also all of our New Milford Adult Education graduates, the graduated also. We'd like to thank them and congratulate them on a job well done. Also like to congratulate our Scout Pack Number 66 for their advancement and also for their proper, on Friday night, their properly retiring American flags for their ceremony, and we are very proud of them and happy for them and want to congratulate them for a job well done. Thank you. As we talked about a little bit earlier during public participation, I'd really like to thank Ryan Thibodeau, probably mispronouncing his last name, but he did advance to an Eagle Scout. I had the pleasure of being there when it was announced to be an Eagle Scout and to be a part of that. And it is truly a wonderful endeavor to become an Eagle Scout, and it's a very honorable thing to do, and not that many people can do it. So I'd like to congratulate Ryan on a job well done. And for those that attended Friday nights, really Thursday nights, block party, we'd like to thank Bank Street Investments. It was a wonderful time, saw a lot of kids there, people there, enjoying the ambiance of our beautiful downtown. I'd like to thank them and also Bank Street Theater for the movie on the green. Saw that happening in our wonderful town, it was excellent. I'd like to thank them both. Thank you. And for those that were around town on Saturday, I'd like to thank Pastor Frank and the Faith Church for their day of service. They did a lot of things for our town, for just doing good deeds. They cleaned up the River Walk, they went and helped plant our arboretum. And for those of you that haven't seen that, it's at Holton Meadows. And actually, it is 12 trees in a perfect circle. And I'd like to thank them for all the things that they did. They also helped clean up the Northville 1-room schoolhouse. They did wonderful things, they did face painting, they were giving out water, ice cream, and we can't thank them enough for doing that day of service. We have lots of people that are volunteers as well that do a day of service all the time. So we'd just like to thank everyone for that. Also, I'd like to thank our Park and Rec Director, Dan Calhoun, Tammy Reardon, our grant writer, Conservation Commission Member, Michael St. John, Charles Bogie, Carlos Caradad, Faith Church, Councilman Simansky and the Howland Associates, all made efforts to make the arboretum a reality. It's a wonderful thing, if you can go down to Holton Meadows, for those who don't know, it's right across the street from Water Witch, and you'll see those 12 trees planted in a perfect circle. And from what Michael St. John said, what will happen is they'll all supposedly bloom all at the same time. So as they continue to grow and get bigger, it's a wonderful testament to true volunteerism and the kindness and also the grant that we received for that. So I'd like to thank them for that. Also, I'd like to thank Ogarella and the Grad Party for what they do each and every year to keep our graduates as they get out of graduation safe. Like to thank them for that, for what they do. Also, I'd like to welcome our new superintendent, I don't know if she's here, I met her, thank you. Care if you could stand up? And welcome. Also, a quick, brief update. We continue on our roads program, we're continuing to work on Squire Hill. We're beginning to put the top course down. I know this is all weather permitting, as we're getting lots and lots of rain each and every week. We've also, Second Hill has come back for bid and has been awarded. So Second Hill will be beginning in the process in July. We're continuing on filling potholes in town, which with all this rain has caused many more. We do have hundreds of miles of road. We are the largest landmass town in the state of Connecticut, and I cannot thank our DPW staff enough for continuing to work hard. Also, continuing roofs. The bid was awarded for the Saranoke Roof Project, so you will see construction begin on Saranoke. We're also going to be putting out to bid for the high school as we continue on our infrastructure investments. For those that parked outside on this side, you'll see that the oil tank was done on Town Hall. That's done and completed. We are now moving to the Police Department, and Saranoke will also be done. So we're going to continue to do our investments in the town because as we all know, the townspeople want a return on their investment. And also, when we're asking new businesses and new people to come, they want to have a nice road, they want to have their stuff work for them. So we're going to continue to move on from that. So I'm going to end it there, and next we're going to move on to the consent agenda.
All right, item four, move to accept the consent agenda. Item 4A, prior minutes, and item 4B, tax collector.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Dis opposed? Thank you.
Item five, mayor's office, discussion and possible action as pertains to the Board of Education budget for year 2019-2020.
Thank you. If I could just take a moment, kind of some background on this. Let's just put on the agenda, as many of you went to the Board of Education meeting and were seeing the cuts that were proposed by the superintendent and then the Board of Education. We heard your concerns and wanted to bring, as you're bringing this to us, there's a couple of things that I wanted to basically tell you. There's two different items that are basically for both of, that concern both of these is towards your funding of your band program and all the things that are worthwhile. First and foremost, I'm a huge proponent of the band, always have been. Matter of fact, my daughter was the first, one of the first groups for the Color Guard and the Winter Guard. So I know how important it is. And I'd like to thank Mr. Sizdek for what you've done. You brought us a state championship, so thank you. Now, what was brought before us, it's kind of convoluted, but this is municipal and government finance. So if it gets a little tricky, I apologize to you, because it does. So basically, one of the things that we have to look at is two things. One, reinstoring the cuts that were proposed by the Board of Education. So that's going to be solution number one. So, we believe we do have a solution, but it's going to require our Board of Education partners to help us with it because the Board of Education decides where the money goes. That, my friends, is just how the state of Connecticut runs its statutes. So, with that being said, I'd like to ask Ms. Francis to kind of give us what we believe is a solution to this problem. Councilwoman Francis.
So what I'd like to move is that we assign up to $200,000 to the Board of Education surplus for the fiscal year end 2019 to be utilized for fiscal year end 2020 budget. We strongly recommend that a portion of the monies
So Councilwoman Francis, could I just stop you for a second?
Yes.
I apologize. So Anthony, what is the proposed surplus for this year? For the Board of Education?
18, 19?
For this year?
Approximately $300,000.
Okay. So ladies and gentlemen, we have $300,000 right now that is in the surplus for the Board of Education as of today. Ms. Francis.
I continue with my motion about $200,000. And we strongly recommend that a portion of these monies be utilized to prevent the cuts to the following. And I think it's important to me and to the other council members here that I'm going to read to you what we would like to see. $91,515 restoration of the practical arts teacher at Sarah, no, Scaticoke, rather. $3,970 restoration of the Winter Guard at New Milford High School. $10,870 to the high school restoration of winter percussion stipend. $50,588 for restoration of the TAG teacher. $9,000 New Milford High School restoration of music field trips. $10,000 New Milford High School restoration of athletic field trips. $6,074 to Scaticoke for restoration of practical arts supplies. $440 for Scaticoke restoration of practical arts sewing machines. $3,000 to the high school restoration of student activities field trips. $7,350 to Hill and Plain for restoration of teacher supplies. $1,000 restoration of PREC classroom supplies, Northville. $1,000 Saranoke restoration of science supplies. $1,000 Saranoke restoration of PE equipment and supplies. $500 Saranoke restoration of art supplies. $1,500 to New Milford High School, and this is a favorite of mine, restoration of Bunsen burners, glassware, multimeters, and PLTW equipment, science. $1,193 to Northville restoration of phonics kindergarten supplies. $500 to Northville restoration of Pratt Center presentations. And last, but certainly not least, $500 to the high school for restoration of field trips for children's lit. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask for clarification on that very quickly?
Absolutely.
Are you referring to the stated surplus that we anticipate for this year to pay for those items?
Absolutely.
We can't do that.
Why not?
That fiscal year imbalance is subject to order, which wouldn't be issued until January.
And we're discussing our budget tomorrow, so how would we offset that? How would we be able to take our end-of-year balance to do that?
Greg?
Just to get one thing straight, regardless of the restoration of this money, you still have to post a budget that the public voted for at referendum.
Correct.
Okay? So that has to be done. And we can do, transfer you the $200,000. You're saying it's $300,000, but at least $200,000 as a supplemental appropriation for you to restore those line items. And just a point of clarification on the ECS part.
So we're going to get to that second, Greg? That's a whole different thing.
Why don't we hear the whole package and we'll go from there?
What's that?
Well, we'll hear the whole package and then
We're going to do this one first.
Could I respectfully ask for a recess?
We're going to do this one first, and then we're going to go to the ECS. Because I think the people need to know what our solution is. Absolutely.
First of all, just as operations chair, we appreciate this conversation. We're going to try and find a way to see if we can assist in the Board of Education budget. So I appreciate this. This conversation began last week when we set up a meeting at your office, and I do appreciate it. We are just trying to understand the logistics of transferring and where we're dealing with two different fiscal years. So that's where we're still a little unclear as to what the instructor not even the line item suggestions of the reductions, the dollar amount and how it works with our end-of-year balance. And if you're talking about a supplemental appropriation, the way that we could do it is we could back out our capital in this budget with that dollar amount and free up those dollars in our operational budget.
That we can do. That we can do.
Without a supplemental appropriation.
Right?
Well, once we know what the surplus will be, we'll be able, we can make a motion, I believe, tonight to do a supplemental appropriation assignment from fund balance. What's going to happen is part of your surplus, you're going to allow to fall to the bottom line, and we are going to do an assignment of fund balance of that $200,000 to accommodate this money.
So the document, just a clarification that the Board of Ed would adopt tomorrow night showing 601, 897 cuts, 200 of that can be allocated on that sheet to come from the funding you're mentioning?
What line item?
It will be a supplemental appropriation, yes. So, but you do understand, you have to make the cuts that were adopted in referendum.
We have to come to the bottom of the line?
You have to come to that bottom line. And then what we will do is, like I said, we'll do a supplemental appropriation from fund balance to fund your programs.
So just for the purpose of tomorrow evening, when we go to adjust our budget in the amount of the dollar amount that you're giving, are we using a blanket line item dollar amount that we're going to, we're still going to get to the $600,000, but we're going to designate a line item in that dollar amount? Is that what you're indicating?
No, you're going to have to make the cuts, and then with the supplemental appropriation, you will restore that money after the fact.
So we're making the adjustments tomorrow night? So how would that help us with those adjustments tomorrow night? We're still making those cuts? So we're making 600?
We will fund
But we've already made those decisions in which we won't, we, when, I'm curious on the other idea of perhaps taking line items such as bills that we share with the town and zeroing those out to offset some of those, the munis and the audit report of $61,504 and $45,000 for the audit report. If we were to take those and zero those out, we would see an automatic reduction.
Well, here's the thing, where is the town supposed to make up that money at our side?
Couldn't you do it from the ECS? Wouldn't it be cleaner to just transfer?
You just subtract it from the 433.
Am I missing something here? The Board of Ed wants to turn down $200,000?
No, no.
We would like it to be legal.
Attorney Grimes?
Yes, sir.
Are we on good footing here?
Well, tell me what you're trying to do, and then I'll let you know if you're on good footing.
Well? Finance just said we can do this.
What are you asking me to do? What are you asking me to do, and then I'll tell you about what the statute's provided for. Have you done with the motion yet? I don't think you
The motion is done, and it was seconded, I believe.
So let's just go over a couple of basic
I think this is a question to your board of finance, I mean, your finance.
The Board of Ed is rejecting the surplus.
Okay. For the current year, just to be clear.
Correct, for the year ending June 3rd. I'm proposing to let $200,000 of that fall to the bottom line and have an assignment of fund balance to be used by the Board of Ed, specifically for that purpose. And we can bring that in after July. Well, actually, we can bring it in once we know that the $200,000 is realized as a surplus by the Board of Ed.
And from the legal standpoint, so you're aware, what it says correctly, you cannot spend more than what the board has approved for either bottom line and that's why the appropriations supplemental are out.
Okay.
This works for me, what are we arguing about here? This works for me.
Well, we're trying to make sure that it's legal, that's what we want to do.
It seems like, focus, focus, the attorney is okay. The director of finance is okay with this. The town council apparently is going to be okay with this.
I understand that.
You're saying to me, Dave, I'm sorry, we don't want $200,000 You're saying to me, Dave, I'm sorry, we don't want two hundred thousand dollars.
I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is...
And I'm not hearing what you're saying.
You missed one group and that would be the auditors. And I'd like to...
So, we already spoke today.
You spoke to the auditors.
Absolutely.
And they signed off on this.
And they're, they're, they endorse this.
So, let me get this straight. So, two hundred thousand of our three hundred thousand dollar surplus, you're saying we can use for our operating budget for next year?
Absolutely.
As per this list.
Well...
That's our, that's our, we can't do that, but we can strongly recommend those.
Strongly recommend was my term. We strongly recommend.
They can do what they want.
Thanks, Mike.
So... So, we have a motion and we have a second.
Seconded.
We, we already have a second.
We did.
We have a motion. Okay?
Yes, I have a concern that we won't be able, we won't be able to use that offset in two hundred thousand dollars for the proposed cuts that the Board of Ed is going to be making tomorrow evening.
That's correct. So, what we're making, we're making a commitment through this motion to fund a supplemental appropriation of two hundred thousand dollars to, of your surplus this year to use next year. Technically, tomorrow night, you need to vote in the six hundred thousand in cuts. However, you know, we have approved a supplemental appropriation to be used next year of two hundred thousand dollars.
Already, with recommendations for where it should go.
We have no ability to tell you.
Right, it's no different than any other.
We're just giving you recommendations.
No different than when we recommend things in the past. I just don't see the problem.
Well, it seems to happen.
It's not, it's not that there's a problem and, and Mr. Bear, just to be clear, it's not that the board is not appreciative of these conversations. We have been working with the town. We've spent hours and we approached the town with line item suggestions. So, for you to insinuate that we're not grateful, I take offense to. That is not correct. So, I want to be very clear on that. Furthermore, with the recommendation that's being made, you all are absolutely correct there, recommendations, it is the board's displeasure of having to go through all of those adjustments and we will do our elected duty. What we're trying to figure out is to make sure, because these conversations that we're having publicly are different than what occurred ten days ago. So, in all fairness, that's what I'm trying to clear up, because tomorrow night, we're going to have people looking at us and we can't be wrong. So, we're just trying to clear up what is, how the money is going to shift. And so, what I'm hearing is that we are to make our adjustments, find the ways to get through our adjustments, and next year after final audit, after final audit in January, those monies will be put into the capital reserve. Or into the, into the, in our operation budget.
Into your operating budget.
But they're coming back after final audit is what I meant. Okay. I just want to be clear.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Wendy, that's all I asked and that was very clear to me.
So...
And I apologize if you took offense, but it was very clear to me what the Finance Director said.
We have a, a motion on the floor and we have a second. And this can only be a recommendation to the Board of Education?
Um, we got a recommendation to the Board of Finance. Because we have to make the recommendation to the Board of Finance, it's got to go through them.
No, it doesn't.
No.
It's what Matt whispered.
The supplemental appropriation.
Not this, we're not...
All right.
Yes.
So, Dr. Mullins?
Just, just for clarification.
Absolutely.
The budget was approved by the voters.
Yes, sir.
But legally, we are allowed to do a supplemental...
Yes, sir. And we did check it with our auditors to make sure that we were in compliance. Greg?
Yes.
Are we in compliance?
Did you check if there are other in-kind services that the Board of Ed provides to the town that we could reduce that would then be offset by your ECS when you receive it?
Actually, actually, there's going to be another motion coming.
We have another one.
Okay. So, we have, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next?
Now.
Let's go to the ECS funding, which we've had people come up and talk about. So...
Mayor, can I just jump in for one second?
Yes, sir, Dr. Mullins.
So, there's three hundred thousand continued in force, two hundred thousand is going to be in the supplemental.
Correct.
The other hundred thousand is going to be continued in force?
They could ask what to be put into their...
Capital reserve.
Capital reserve.
Historically, that's been asked to go to capital reserve and we've designated some to turf field in past years.
I just, I had this list of continued force, I guess I missed it, is it there?
That's a town, that's the town side.
Couldn't have added a little line to that?
Okay. So, the next is concerning the ECS, the educational cost sharing. And for those that don't know too much about the educational cost sharing, is that money, and Greg, our Finance Director can tell you, doesn't come in on July first. So, Greg, when does it come in?
Comes in three installments throughout the year, the last one day in May.
So, you really wouldn't do any good with your educational cost-sharing money today because we haven't gotten it yet. As a matter of fact, the Governor hasn't signed the bill yet. Correct? So theoretically, we don't have the money. Two years ago, three years ago, actually, the Town Council opined, as they did, that we shouldn't be expending money we don't have. As a matter of fact, it created a couple of years ago an almost two million dollar hole that we had to fill. And that was cuts to staff, that was all sorts of stuff that we had to do. So, what we're going to propose, and Councilwoman Francis is going to propose, and I don't want to take all the thunder, proposes to do what we said we were going to do. Give the ECS money that goes above and beyond the money that is budgeted for to your capital reserve. That...
If we decide to absorb the audit, sharing, and munis sharing, that will be reduced by that bunch. That was the agreement. So, anything over and above the budget...
Councilwoman Francis?
I move that we appropriate up to four hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars in additional education cost-sharing funds to be received to the Board of Ed capital reserve account. Said appropriation is made subject to actual receipt of monies from the state of Connecticut.
I'll second that again.
I have a comment.
Ms. Francis?
I love everything you all said, the ban, students' school, one of my favorite times of my life, and I appreciate you all come out to all these meetings and I understand how heart-wrenching it is if you're thinking of your child losing something that they truly enjoy. I guess I have to say I have a slight disappointment, although I guess I should be used to it after sitting up here for a while, that, that you didn't think we would do, as a council, what we said we would do when we made the statement that if we got the money back, we would turn it over to you. And, you know, I could say I personally am disappointed, I can't speak for everyone else, but I hope that you see that we are, as one person who spoke tonight said, that we do believe in being truthful and now talk to your Governor and get him to sign the bill.
So, good news for everybody? There's the opportunity with the help of our, of our Board of Education members to restore your cuts. And number two, ECS money going into the capital reserve. Do I have a...
If I may?
Mr. Lawson?
I think earlier in some of the discussions that we had with the four thirty-three and what Mr. Osopo and Mrs. Follnback just referred to, the services that the town bills us for, which the board would be very open, and here's why, to reducing those bills for the audit in the amount of, is that sixty-one thou... Forty-one?
Forty-five. Forty-five for the audit.
Forty-five, sixty-one five for munis.
For, for, for the munis system, which could be built at the end of the year, realizing receipt of said funds. This would allow us, this would allow us an additional hundred thousand dollars in an, in our operating budget, which we could put to use for the cuts of personnel, the cuts of music, everything that has been proposed, everything that has already been cut. We would have an additional hundred thousand dollars, meaning the two hundred thousand dollars, I know this, I'm not a math major either, but bear with me. With the two hundred thousand dollars supplemental, I would propose a hundred and change for billing us later on for those two items. That's three hundred thousand dollars that's operating. And that's, that's, that's the key part. That's the key part for us to restore some of the things that the board earlier cut from the superintendent's proposed budget. That's what we're interested in. That's the part that affects programs, our operational budget. That's the part that affects personnel and ultimately, everybody in the room.
So, Dave, just to be clear?
Yeah.
When I called you on Thursday or Friday, right?
Yeah.
I asked you what happened at that meeting that Wendy alerted you to.
Yeah.
And you told me what you were looking for was a hundred and fifteen. We just gave you two hundred, which is ninety more than what you asked for last week. So, now you're asking, just to be clear, for another hundred and ten on top of the additional ninety we just gave you on top of what you asked for last week when you and I spoke on the telephone.
Well, no, 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 what I'm saying is reduced from the four hundred and thirty-three thousand, which...
No, 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 Dave.
Yes.
Man-to-man. When we spoke last week, did you, I said, what do you want? Did I not say, I said, what happened at the meeting and what would you like?
Yeah.
You said you'd like munis and audit, and at the time you thought it was forty and forty.
Subtracted from the four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars.
So, tonight, instead of the forty and forty, we just made a motion and approved two hundred instead of eight.
Yes.
So, two and a half times what you requested on the telephone.
Well, what I'm saying is this, okay? This is a mechanism where the town still gets the money and we are allowed to put it in our operating budget. That's what I'm saying. The, the council is at its leisure to decline. What I'm saying is, we, it is our hopes that, you know, we could have reduced billing.
But why didn't you answer that last week when I called?
I did. And I said to, and subtract it from the four thirty-three.
No, you asked for eighty total, we just gave you two hundred.
Well, not, but it's not coming from the four hundred and thirty-three. That's a appropriate, special appropriations. That's how I see it. Well, it's the, it's the council's purview.
And I think that needs to be said. Mr. Samansky, can I address what you asked because that's pretty important? If we were to try and offset some of our reductions tomorrow evening, we've had many discussions and thank you for your time and, and thank you as well for the meeting last week. We did try and bring some ideas to the table and I thought it was pretty, it was a pretty good meeting. The only way that we may be able to change our reduction tomorrow is to take what we have designated for our capital reserve, correct? And offset that number and use it in our operational budget with the dollar amount that you're identifying. Would that work?
Yep, the Board of Ed can make it one of its motions tomorrow night if you're designating two hundred thousand dollars to come from our fiscal year imbalance that would not be realized until after the audit. We could build in a similar item withdrawal from our capital reserve today that will be backfilled by that supplemental appropriation.
We're offsetting the line item in our capital reserve.
That's what the Board of Ed is looking for. We're, we're very appreciative. We're looking for something...
Very appreciative.
An offset to our operational budget instead of the six hundred and one thousand dollars in cuts that were proposed last week.
That would be doable.
That's the only other way. And we want, I wanted, I wanted to bring this up, I normally try not to jump up, but I think this conversation should be had like this, so tomorrow night, you don't have to call someone else and say, what happened at the meeting?
Absolutely.
This discussion should happen now.
Absolutely.
So, we could offset our capital and, and put in that line. You, you, and, and do it that way.
Yeah, okay.
No, 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 I want to, I want to hear from Mr. Lawson.
This money we don't have in our coffers yet. The four thirty-three, I mean...
Yeah, no, we understand that.
So, it's just the two hundred we're talking about?
And again, to be clear, the purse must be made based upon the draft government.
Mm-hmm.
And they subsequently take care of the supplemental appropriation. Both, both with the two hundred thousand and any money, any monies coming from the portfolio.
So, I, I think we're confusing the public by having, by having all of these conversations? So, so... So, so where we are right now is the two, is the two hundred. Hey, Wendy?
Yes.
Wendy, so the thought process is the two hundred thousand comes from your where?
Well, the two hundred thousand that you're proposing and giving the Board of Ed is an additional appropriation. So, if we cannot incorporate that into our operational budget tomorrow evening, we can incorporate part of the four thirty-three because that's the amount of money that you are saying that if you receive the funds in ECS
No.
of four thirty-three that you will deposit that into capital reserve. That's the second motion that's here. What I'm proposing is that the Board of Ed would make an adjustment in their operating budget tomorrow night, perhaps of two hundred thousand dollars, taken out of our capital reserve account in the anticipation that if you do receive the four thirty-three, that amount will go into capital reserve and backfill us. We're looking for things that we can take as far as our operational cuts for nineteen twenty and substitute some of those items.
We know we have to get to the final number. We know we have to get to the number that was voted on by the town in New Milford. We're aware of that. We're looking to...
Somebody proposing to use that two hundred thousand as a revenue source? I'm not following. You're looking to...
Yes.
Yes.
You're looking to use...
As a revenue source. Because that's the, that's what it's being...
Pulling it out of our capital reserve as we did in past years to fund our five-year capital plan, but pulling it from our capital reserve to then be backed up.
Will the auditor sign off on that?
I'm not sure about that.
So, you're saying take the, so take the money out of capital reserve and then the two hundred that we said would come from this year's surplus will go into capital reserve?
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
That's not what I heard the motion is.
No, that's not what our motion is, I'm asking, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
That's what you guys are doing. You know, Doc Mullins had his hand up for now.
Dr. Mullins?
Can I, can, let me, let me try to simplify it just a bit. Folks, we have two, we have two budgets. We have capital, which is tables and buildings and roofs and anything you can touch. That's our capital budget. And then we have our operational budget and make matters easy. That's all of you, okay? So, the problem is, when we have money left over, by law, it has to go into the capital budget. That's where we're at. So, what we're asking to do is since we know two hundred thousand will be set aside or whatever...
That's a special appropriation.
Appropriation, since the, some of the four thirty, four hundred and thirty-three thousand will be set aside for our capital reserve, we, back to the operational budget now, which is all of you, we have a few tables and chairs and things like that that we could remove.
What, if, we, we think we've walked through the exercise and I'd like to, to run it by you. We're talking about the four hundred and thirty-three thousand, that we don't know exactly how much you're going to get. If we were to use a portion of that forty, uh, four thirty-three, say two hundred thousand to help in our operational budget, we could create that revenue line. We know we have that money in our capital reserve, so if the full four thirty-three doesn't come in or a portion of that, then we've taken two hundred thousand out of our capital reserve that we've taken out. But at least it covers the town, it covers the board, and it offsets our operational budget.
I don't see how you can do anything but, but post the budget that was passed by referendum. Tomorrow, you must do that.
We will.
And then after the fact, any supplemental appropriation can increase whichever line item you choose. item you choose.
The 433 isn't a supplemental appropriation. It's part, we're just taking, we're.
Well, it will be if, if it's transferred. Don't forget, it's on the town's side of the budget.
Right, but if we reduce it on the.
I'm talking about the 200,000.
Yeah, I'm talking about the 433. The 433 is not a special appropriation. Are we in agreement with that?
No, that will be a supplemental appropriation if we have to transfer to your side of the budget.
You would put it into our capital reserve.
Correct.
But then you're saying to offset some of that with not paying or munis not paying for the audit.
We can't.
So can I, um, could I, are we gonna?
It's gonna be too much.
So just to be clear, maybe I'm confused. I think the town council's purview is to say, hey, we got a plan. Here's some money. We got some suggestions on where we could go, trying to work with you. They think the mechanics have to be signed up by the auditor, but I think our responsibility tonight is just to say yes or no to the amount of money. Am I wrong?
Correct.
All right. So there's a motion for part of it. We said yes. Now there's another piece.
And the auditor signed off on the idea.
And they signed up on that. And then there was, I wasn't clear on, I thought there was a second piece coming, but then the munis and the audit fees jumped in. So what's the second motion?
So the second motion was the, Katie?
To appropriate 433,000 and 185, an additional ECS fund.
Everybody listening, because this is really important. This is the money you guys came talking about wanting. So listen to the motion.
No, we can't use it.
We can't use it if it's not easily. This is a second motion, so listen to it.
I'm, I'm not changing the motion. I have to withdraw the first one.
No, the first one's already done.
Yeah, right.
So the 200,000, you have the money for.
This one I already did.
For the band and everything.
Want me to restate it?
Yes, you can.
How, how, we're saying, how are we gonna get those funded?
Hang on.
The motion again is to appropriate the 433, 185, an additional ECS to be received to the Board of Education capital reserve account. Said appropriation is made subject to the actual receipt of the monies from the state of Connecticut. That was the motion made and seconded. That's what we say.
To capital reserve cannot be used to offset this year, this upcoming year's operational budget. So the cuts they need to make to the operational budget for this upcoming full year still have to happen tomorrow night unless you get some money into that operational budget as a source of revenue.
Point of order, Anthony.
How is that confusing?
In your current budget, do you not have your cap, your, do you not have capital items to be funded by the capital reserve in your budget?
No.
In 18, 19, yes, and 19, 20, no.
No, we reduced it.
No, 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 you don't have capital items.
We redu, we zeroed it out as part of the budget process to come back to the town and collaborate as part of that list for 422,000 and had that part of the discussion 10 days ago.
Correct, and where would those capital items be funded from?
Our, we've zeroed out our capital.
How will you fund them?
Our capital.
No, how much is in your capital reserve right now?
300?
727.
727.
And we're proposing to add another 433.
Right.
And in your budget, you showed for, you showed a request, potential request of 400 and something in capital.
Correct.
So you have 1.1 million in your capital reserve.
In our capital reserve. We need to find a way to capture a portion of that to move into our operational budget for reductions. That's the point. That's what we need.
Greg, Director of Finance, go ahead.
That would have to occur after July 1st. Have to post the budget.
As it was voted.
Change your budget, okay? You can ask for this after the fact.
It has to be voted on.
I understand, but your bottom line is still the same.
If, if Board of Ed incorporated a $200,000 withdrawal from the capital reserve as part of their budget.
Budget adoption tomorrow.
Tomorrow night and an additional 400,000.
That's the bottom line.
That was identified. The bottom line will still remain the same.
Remains the same. The number is still the same.
As long as the bottom line remains the same.
There you go.
That's what we're.
Well, because Anthony, last year you guys funded part of your budget through the capital reserve. So you can just adjust tomorrow night, taking a certain amount of money. 100, 200, or 300.
Let, let me.
Capital reserve, just like you did last year.
That would then be backfilled by the 433 and ECS funds, whatever you see. Yep, that's what I was trying to get across.
What we're trying to make clear is that tomorrow night when we vote, that number's identical to what you're asking us to vote on. What we're, it hasn't changed with the voters. It, it is, it's the same number. What we're doing is an adjustment on the line item for that.
You're, you're adding another revenue.
That's it, exactly.
Another word.
Correct, but it doesn't have to be 200,000.
No, no, it's not 200,000.
No, they can adjust it to whatever they want. It doesn't have to be 200.
Taking the money from capital reserve.
Correct, so it could be 150, it could be 250.
Exactly.
It doesn't have to be what we just.
You're exactly right.
Correct. But before this evening, we didn't know.
It's in the bottom line, it's in their pocket.
Yeah, but you know it now.
Council approval.
I don't.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm not an accountant and I don't, you know, the ins and outs and how you guys get wherever you're going. You get 200,000, you get the 433 from the state. If we get it from the state, it's all your 633,000 tonight. What is the problem? You guys do in the back room and do your accounting and figure it out. We're wasting our time.
But Anthony, you're already.
Ready to vote.
Dan, Anthony, Greg, for the record.
The Board of Ed can increase the withdrawal from the capital reserve account to offset the budget as far as revenue item with anticipation that whenever ECS funds, that capital reserve will be withdrawn. That capital reserve dollar amount is not going to be tied to actual capital items we're funding in our budget. It is going to be a sole source revenue in there. And we would check.
Set the reduction.
I would check with the auditors tomorrow to make sure that that's okay before the Board of Ed incorporates it into its operating budget changes.
It isn't capital reserve when restricted for capital, one-time, non-recurring capital
Well, I'd be asking the auditors for the.
What, did you ask the auditors?
I'd like to know.
We weren't talking about.
Okay, so you'll do that.
You said capital reserve, this is a new equi, a new variable in the equation.
But you've done a bit more.
Have you done this, have you done this before?
Only tied to actual capital items in the budget.
Not operationally.
And that's the stumbling point here is we, we appreciate everything that's happening here, but we would like to incorporate this as an offset to the cuts that we have to make tomorrow evening.
We already have 200 already. Correct. With what we just approved.
That's an additional appropriation.
But you know, but on paper, you're showing the cuts tomorrow, but you know that's being restored.
Do an additional appropriation.
It's just technically, right, it's technically, that's the mechanism. We made a formal commitment today.
Their intent is to use the capital reserve money for operating expenses.
That's exactly right.
I don't believe that we can do that.
That's exactly right.
Well, the town, the town will be depositing proceeds from excess revenue in ECS to capital reserve under your motion. So I think it. So that would.
I thought, you know, from my understanding, the, the capital reserve is for one-time, non-recurring capital expenditures. Not to supplement an operating.
Correct. That's right.
Yeah, but you're saying you want to use it for operating expenses.
By that same matter, I would think that the town would need an opinion on whether they could use additional revenue received through ECS to contribute directly to Board of Ed capital reserve.
What's a supplemental appropriation?
I want to hear what you have to say.
You're trying to offset 600,000 of cuts with revenue that can't be used for that purpose.
Right, that's the problem.
Dr. Muller?
Can't do that.
That's right.
That's why we can't.
Just can't do that.
That's, that's.
I have the, I have the wording downstairs in my office.
And, and with all due respect, that was one of the reasons why when we had began this meeting, we thought of looking at line items in which we could reduce a legitimate, not that any of those others suggested, a legitimate line item such as munis or the audit, and which is identifiable when you open the Board of Education budget or you can see 45,000 or 61,500. You can take those numbers, zero those out. We would see a reduction in our operational budget. The number stays the same and the money can come back to the town through the ECS.
But you have to.
It's a cleaner way to do it.
Transfers at will, correct? When you go to your board, what I'm saying is, you gotta make the cuts. When you get the supplemental, then you can put it back wherever you wish, frankly. Whether that supplemental comes from 200,000.
I understand, but if I could, since we just closed the loop here, why could we not, based on the discussion that we had, and there was no commitment, I want to be very clear, this was just a discussion, we were all trying to think outside the box. When we started working on this, how can we find relief in our operational budget? Well, we mentioned that we have billable items by the town in our budget in which if we zeroed out, you could cleanly get that reimbursement from ECS without any question whatsoever. We would see the immediate relief in our operational budget and that would help and we could take it and it would be clean.
But we just made a motion to give you 200,000, which is 90 grand higher than what you requested last year.
It's, the pro, the concern is, we're, we'd love to have as, as much relief as we can. We've been discussing for 45 minutes how to make that happen and we still haven't been able to get a clear answer on that. It's not going to help us in our operational budget. I'd love to have money.
The 200 is not.
How is it?
The 200,000 in your operational budget is not. We have guaranteed you next year's operating budget, we are going to supplementally appropriate 200,000 beyond what you are cutting tomorrow. We guaranteed it.
So we can take line items and just.
From our fiscal year-end balance this year. You're issuing an additional appropriation.
Can you clarify for the public what school year we can use that for and the Board of Ed can use it for?
Correct, yeah, so, so just so everyone's aware, so they're running a surplus of approximately 300,000, Anthony, say, give or take, there's that audit process where, where the auditors get paid all this money, they look at every dollar and say, and they say, your real, your real balance is 302,000. So we already made a motion to give the Board of Ed, say, 200,000 of that surplus, which by law falls to the unassigned fund balance, the general fund of the town, but they historically come to us and say, can we put your surplus in capital reserve? We, I don't believe we've ever denied that request to put it in capital reserve. So what we're trying to do is being creative in saying, listen, you're going to have a 200,000 surplus, instead of putting that in capital reserve this year, we're going to tell you, you can use that for your operating.
Can we?
But, but technically, so.
You're guaranteeing them.
Megan, please, I have the floor, stop. So what happens is tomorrow night, by law, they have to make the 600,000 in cuts, but they do that with the understanding that tonight, we approved a supplemental appropriation of an additional 200,000 that at some point in the budget here, they can use for their use beyond what was budgeted.
Well, what, to, to understand.
I'm speaking with you here, stop, stop, stop.
Just, you know, respectfully, what that means, and I, I'm, thank you for trying to restore our banned funds, that does nothing for us. Our season starts in August.
Exactly.
Oh, no, correct, so.
So how, they, I, I don't envy them.
No, so, so what, so just to be clear again, they're cutting tomorrow night, however, they know they're going to have that money throughout the year, so it's fluid. I mean, if you look at the budget position in operations, it changes every year. Sometimes there's some in certified salary after, and it gets transferred throughout the year.
I got it, I got it. I have an idea, I have an idea. I think what you're saying, if you're, may we be so bold, if we can work out the mechanics to take the 200,000 that is mentioned this evening and put it into a motion tomorrow night, so we know that we can use that and that what we'll do is we will make our reductions and come back and offset them. Is that, that's the only way we're going to be able to make it happen.
Wendy, the whole point of approving it is so you can go to your meeting tomorrow and know you have it.
But, but they're also, I understand that, Katie.
Just say, yes, you understand that. And yes.
I understand.
You're happy to have it.
Just real quick, when you make that motion, make it contingent in the Board of Finance approval, because before tomorrow night, you won't.
Wait, I have a question. Does the 200,000 dollars that you guys are giving them, are they able to use it when the school year starts or only after January 1st?
After July 1st.
July 1st is the new year.
July 1st is the new year for the municipal.
So our fiscal year is.
So that's okay.
Your, your change of 200,000.
Okay, but just to be clear, everyone, whether, whether we transfer the money to capital reserve, whether we transfer it to operating, no matter what we do tonight, it needs Board of Finance approval.
Always.
Because it's a supplemental appropriation.
Yes.
And so we can make that motion subject to Board of Finance approval. I'm good with that. We're going to put it in motion. That's the best that we're going to do. But, but we did, when, when the questions come, do we get it, do we get, we have had several conversations and we were here for a few hours.
But that was then, this is now. We voted on it tonight, Wendy.
That may be then, but that's part of the process, Katie.
And I'm sorry I couldn't make the meeting, but what we voted on today, right now, is what we want to do and you can use that tomorrow night.
But that was already, or a motion that we already carried.
It's already voted on, yes. Yes. So we have our second motion made and seconded.
Any other discussion, Dr. Muller?
Can I have one more thing? Could I respect the ask that the town council members are there tomorrow night? The Back of the Board of Ed. We get a commitment from somebody tonight for that.
Well, that, that would be a real problem for me because I have to go out of the country, so I will be overseas. I would, I would appreciate that since this is a year.
So is there a discussion?
Dr. Muller? I'll be there. Absolutely.
Can I just say that the audio video is working except that the date is out for tomorrow's date? People are looking at the site, it's going out. If anyone wants to get on Facebook, then let people know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No.
Dr. Muller? We haven't, we haven't voted yet. Dr. Muller?
The continued enforce is approximately 300,000.
The surplus, Board of Ed surplus?
Their surplus, which.
Yes.
Potentially is continued enforcement.
So the settlement of fund balance, same thing. Continued enforce is the settlement of fund balance.
I got it. Was there any reason why we just didn't approve the 300,000 to be continued enforce versus
The 200,000? Because that's what we thought their surplus was going to be.
All right. So we have 433,185 that supposedly is coming from the state in ECS money. Now, if you reduce that by 106,500, audit share, munis share, and then reduce the ECS when it came into their capital, that means they would automatically get money into their operating fund that would help them out, correct? So what they're looking for is not the 433 into their capital, what they're really looking for is a 326, 685 in their capital and the town to absorb the 106,500 of munis and audit.
And we just gave them 200 instead of 106,500.
I, I get that part. But this would simplify how they could do their operating budget, but. Can I ask the Board of Ed? Would this simplify your operating budget if the town absorbed the audit share of 45,000, munis share of 61,500, and then subtract that from the 433, 185?
It, it, well, it's understandable, however, it's short of the 200, that's where we're at.
at.
230 been approved.
I think he's asking.
Oh, you're, you're saying in addition?
Right.
Do we have another motion here?
Oh, well, that would be.
There's a motion on the floor.
But that's, but that's not the motion. That's not the motion.
And be amended.
I, I understand that, but I want to be clear, that's not the current one.
I know what, I know what the motion is.
That would be most helpful, because then, uh, instead of, well, we're charged with reducing 600,000, and that would make it approximately 300,000.
So Dr. Muller, just, just building on that, right, because we don't have the money. So then, say we give them this money, subject to receipt of the monies, what was it, a year and a half ago, we lost 1.9 million in ECS money? The town was then responsible for bridging over a million dollars in that gap on the town's side of the budget. So to support that revision to the motion, I would ask for a commitment from David that if less ECS monies come in, that the board of ed comes up with it on their side, we don't have to come up with one.
A couple of years ago, what you're referring to was a budget that went very late into the year, not like this budget is, so there's a great difference between the two. Also, the state's already said, this is approximately, it's a few thousand off here, a few thousand off there, that can be absorbed into a 102 million dollar budget, so it's not this.
And how do you propose that we deal with the reduction in ECS in the second year of the state budget? That's proposed and being signed into law by the governor as part of this, that's not been discussed until then.
Obviously, that's our next budget.
No, 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 I mean, you're, you're saying this is a valid budget, so if it's a valid budget, the state budget's a two-year budget, so then how are we going to deal with that tonight, knowing that?
We, we don't know, we don't know the exact number for next year.
Yes, we do, it's part of the governor's budget.
You know, it's really funny, a few months ago, people were sitting here saying, we have no idea what the state's going to give us, but now you're going to tell me two years out, we know exactly what the state's going to give us?
You're asking us to rely on the same document, Dr. Muller, that you're just speaking to. I mean, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, is it not the same document, the two-year budget?
That's what we have to go by, that they did us.
And they can change this year's, and they can change next year's?
Not always that year.
This would make things much easier for the board of ed to deal with.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Next is executive session.
I'd like to move that we go into executive session for discussion of Teamsters, collective bargaining agreement, NAFSMI collective bargaining agreement, including recent negotiation related thereto, and we invite the personnel director, town attorneys into executive session.
Second.
I move that we go back to open session.
No votes were taken.
No votes, no motions were made, no votes were taken, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
All right, item seven. Move to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the town and New Milford, Connecticut, Local 1202-183, Council 4, NAFSMI, AFL-CIO, and Local 818-50, of Council 4, NAFSMI, AFL-CIO, for the period beginning July 1st, 2019, ending June 30, 2023.
Section 18.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 7B, move to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the town and New Milford, Connecticut, Local Union Number 677, International Brotherhood of Teamsters, for the period beginning July 1st, 2019, ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item number eight, Health Department, move to accept the biannual renewal of the agreement between the town of New Milford and the town of Washington to provide health services to the town of Washington.
We have, when we have a second, Mike?
Yes, um, there's just one small change, we're taking out the word acting in Director of Health, that's second, uh, third line, second paragraph, and then there's the same thing on the second page, so when I, when I provide you with the ones to sign, we're taking that out.
And Mike, how long have we had a similar contract with the town of Washington?
Since, uh, 1998, I believe, every two years.
Any discussion on the contract?
Same as the last two years?
Yes, so, same language, the numbers changed, that's it.
Yeah, so how much, what are they, sorry?
Um, well, the number's changing, I, let me see here what it was.
It went up, not down though?
Yeah, it never goes down.
Cool. Well, that's what you think.
Any, any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Item number nine, Commission on the Arts, uh, move to accept the application for road closure for Commission on the Arts summer concerts, uh, it's contingent on the traffic authority and the police approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do you want me to, the dates are on the attachment, do we need to add those?
It's attached.
Oh, hi Linda.
Linda?
Would you like to say something?
Exactly.
It's going to be a great concert series, and all these music people were still here, and they all come to the concerts.
All right.
They left too early.
So it's pretty much Saturdays from July 6 through, uh, August 31st.
Yeah, seven concerts, um, and normally, I would get approval from traffic authority before coming to you, but their meeting is tomorrow night, and I didn't want to wait for the next town, it was just a little too close, so I'm asking for your approval, contingent on their approval tomorrow.
Any, any discussion?
We have a second.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Linda, we appreciate your patience. Item 10, Public Hearings. Okay, uh, motion, uh, possible, discussion of possible action, I think we should say, regarding the Amendment to Ordinance, Chapter 2, Article 11, Section 2-143, membership, as applies to the Building Committee?
Second.
But do we want to have any discussion?
Matt, would you like to opine real quick, for those that were not at the public hearing?
Uh, just very briefly, um.
Very briefly.
Just, just very briefly, so this allows the Building Committee to consult, or to use any department head, uh, that is appropriate to the project, they happen to be assigned at the point to, uh, to consult, to use them as a consultant, basically, the previous ordinance restricted it to Director of Public Works, the building official, this allows them to consult with any department head.
Any further discussion?
Motion to accept, then?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 10, item 10B, uh, move to accept the Amendment to Ordinance, Chapter 16, Article 2, Section 16-23, Establishment.
Second.
And again, just very briefly, this removes the, uh, the number on the Farmland Preservation Committee to the, uh, number that's in the charter, I believe it takes the alternates from two, two in number to three in number, just keeps the five regular numbers.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, the exception?
Item 11, Economic Development, uh, move to accept the food truck ordinance.
And Karen?
Thank you, your honor, and members of the council. In the last 10 years, food trucks as a business have gained a lot of credibility and popularity, they're no longer the roach coaches of old, um, the most popular trucks have followers on social media, and their locations can become a tourist destination. Food trucks have a very different business model than permanent restaurants, they have limited menus, limited hours, and limited staff, they're very weather dependent, and locations can change. These are regulated businesses, they have to get permits at, at the Health Department, uh, they have to have their vehicles inspected regularly, uh, and in our ordinance, what we're proposing is that they must also partner with another business or property owner. So we are going to be able to support the success of not just one, but two business owners at the same time. Many food trucks start as a micro enterprise with five or fewer employees, and a small investment comparatively speaking, but many can grow to be the size of needing a physical restaurant space. This ordinance would allow food trucks to be established at a variety of locations throughout New Milford, but 250 feet away from regular established restaurants in a brick and mortar situation. Um, the ordinance is very simple, I think it speaks for itself, uh, hopefully, if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them at this time, I would request that we put out, schedule a public hearing.
Mike?
Thank you, Karen, thanks for coming out tonight, and I understand the ordinance as it's written, you know, the 250 feet away, but my concern is, is that Route 7 and 202 is all of a sudden peppered with food trucks, and that, that's a huge concern of mine, I understand the brewery wants one, I so get that, I don't have an issue with that, but I'm just concerned that maybe down the road, that this all becomes a little bit too carnivalish. I was a hot dog dealer, I know all about how it works, so I don't know, can you address that?
Well, at, at this point in time, um, food trucks have grown in popularity, so we may see, and hopefully we will see, several businesses coming forward to license themselves in New Milford so they can do business here. Uh, we, of course, do control that process, if somebody wants to set up a permanent location, they have to go through zoning, just like any other business would, so, uh, we can, of course, modify our approval later if this does become some kind of a problem. Uh, what I've done is looked at other communities and what their food, their ordinances are, and many of the larger communities already have an ordinance like this in place, and have not suffered ill effects from it. Uh, in fact, they still have food truck festivals in a lot of other bigger communities. Even smaller communities are adopting similar ordinances to this one, um, I have, I had a list of, um, other communities that were about our size, who have not had those kind of problems, if anything, they've had a few trucks come in, uh, but not an overwhelming number.
Kate?
Lisa, go ahead. Uh, I'm, I'm aware of some towns, and we have lots of them, and I, I think that we've stated them to be 250 feet from another restaurant, but what about the spot they pull in, because we, we do have in town a couple of places that are pretty much permanent, that people do have food trucks, and they've been there for years and years, so what about the safety of where someone decides they want to pull over, there's, there, uh, do we have the PD signing off on this at all, to say that it's, uh, you know, because cars are going to pull in, and then they're going to pull out, and is it going to be safe, is that included here?
It, there is language that they do have to be in a place that is not blocking the egress.
Shall not impair sightlines or any of those.
Right, but as, just as an example, uh, you know, for instance, over on Houstonic Avenue, which seems like there's lots of space, but the people that come there to grab their hot dogs, I mean, I've gone there myself, and you see them, they turn right, they turn left, or whatever, and they wouldn't be, the truck would not be impeding the sightline, but the sightline is impeded just by nature of where it is, and if we were out on 202, that's not a heavily traveled road, we're on 202 or 7, I would just, I just think it would be a good idea to have somebody give an, a nod of okay, along with, you know, whatever other things we're going to ask for.
Yeah, that's not part of the current ordinance, but that is certainly something that could be addressed and added.
Well, we haven't voted on the current ordinance yet.
Right, it's not, it's not worded that way in this.
I know, that's why I'm asking.
Okay, but it can be done.
Yeah, I, yeah, and that's my suggestion, is that we do that.
So, so now I am back to that, so Katie, before approving this, you want to see language adding police approval to verify sightline?
I'd say fine to it, I'm very happy about having it, if we just add in a line that says that, just like we have other ordinances about having alcohol on town property, it just requires the mayor and the chief of police to sign off, that it's all public health and safety.
So it's going to say, vendor shall locate the food truck in associated parking such that it does not, so that would take care of your concern?
I guess you're just allowing, who makes the decision whether it has to be bearing?
Yeah, I mean, can a food truck go anywhere that needs the signature, because it has to go through some.
Can I finish? Who, may I finish my question, Karen, who would make the determination of the impeding or not impeding a sightline? The vendor?
In, in this case, it would be the, the host location, or the, the business that is having it there, or the owner of the property.
So that, what you just said, answers your question, Michael, they have to have a host, just as the brewery, Houstonic.
Yeah, it has to be on private property.
They're not going to pull up on, next to the town garage, or the state garage, or the Temple Shalom, unless they want them there. They have to have a host, right?
Yes, the way, the way that it's listed, that it's written here, it's for private property, you have to have a host, business or sponsor.
So the host will be responsible as well for this all making the approach?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Michael, does that help?
Yeah, first of all, Matt, are we getting this all right? Sorry, what are you doing?
Well, Attorney DeMello, uh, weigh in on this, because he's the latest attorney, the, but in terms of the process, if you want to use this ordinance as a starting point, the appropriate thing to do is for the mayor next to call a public hearing, town council actually doesn't call a public hearing, and the motion to approve an ordinance tonight is out of order, um, the mayor would have to call a public hearing, then we'd have a public hearing, and then you could make amendments to whatever's on the table at that point, if you want them to come back with the new draft, then the mayor could wait to call a public hearing.
So I withdraw my motion on item 11.
Withdraw the second, whoever did that?
Okay.
Would you have a public hearing scheduled as early as July 8, if you're okay with using this as a starting point?
I'm okay with it all.
I'm okay with that, I'd like to request that the mayor schedule a public hearing prior to the next Friday, the scheduled council meeting, we'll have that drafted tomorrow.
Prior, prior to, yes, that's important, that we all hear that.
I guess, like, the question is, kind of, goes on topic, Katie, is, does the town have any control over the food trucks, if, if, let's say Dave decides to have a food truck come in and it comes with problems, the town have any control over it, if, if the way the ordinance is written, and can we?
What do you mean by?
It, I mean, Dave's not the case, but if someone gets in, starts causing parking problems, traffic problems, or anything like that, do we have any recourse in order to?
It's a safety issue, they got to move it.
Right.
And also has to go through.
Subject to police orders and requests.
Yep. Also has to go through the Health Department.
Is that what you just said? Did you want to have a call?
Public hearing.
Call the meeting. No, a public hearing right before regular.
Oh, I thought you meant way before, because time's wasting in the world of food trucks, we're all saying, July 8, so it's a couple days.
But you got to wait seven days for publication.
All right, so you have to call it, but I withdrew everything.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have the, the motion and a second to call?
No, we can't, we can't motion.
All made a motion?
No, you requested.
It's requested?
Yeah.
It's fine.
So, mayor requests public hearing, July 8, at 6:45, did you say?
Yep, 6:45.
6:45, all right.
Okay.
Okay, so now, moving on down to item 12, Finance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We love having you, Tim.
All right.
Great.
Sure. Good evening. Uh, I just want to give you a year-end update on fiscal year 19. Um, this afternoon, we had our ratings review with Standard and Coors, our presentation was well received, then we should hear our results within a week's time.
Triple A?
That's what we're going for. We're cautiously optimistic.
Optimistic.
Cautiously.
Awesome.
Okay. Um, revenues, I'm projecting revenues for fiscal year 19 to be 101,989,367, which is close to budget, I am projecting to be sure on back tax collect, back taxes collected and building permits, however, we made that up on interest income line as well as in current taxes. Current taxes were above our budgeted collection rate, in other words, we collected more than On the expenditure side, I'm projecting expenditures to be approximately 101,370,175. I've projected board of ed to fully expend their budget despite a projected surplus of approximately $200,000, as reported by their business manager, this is subject to change, and actually changed tonight, so, there.
Really? I didn't notice.
Yeah, though, oh, it did. Without the board of ed, I expect the town to realize a surplus in the range of 250 to 500,000 dollars. This will be absorbed by the carried and forced requests, which will flow into the 2020 budget. These numbers are subject to change due to whatever occurs with encumbrances from now to the middle of August, and any adjusting journal entries initiated by the auditors. Any questions? Next, yes?
I guess it's inside for your office, why is it 176?
I'm getting to, that's next on the agenda. Is it carried and forced, next on the agenda?
Yep.
Oh, that's third, next we have year-end adjustments.
Oh, I do have a question, sorry, we're going to move on, so is that projected surplus higher or lower, about the same as previous years?
Well, it depends, last year, we only had a budgetary surplus of 18,000 dollars, that's when we were facing the 1.9 million.
Yeah.
So, it varies from year to year.
All right, thank you.
Okay, year-end adjustments, there are very few adjustments, um, I, I'm planning to, uh, I'm asking for 50 dollars to go to Gaylord'sville School, 400 for the board of finance, 10,000 for assessors, 1,500 for social services, and 2,000 for duplicating expense, for a total of 13,950 dollars to come from the contingency of town. In addition, um, I just, most of it, this is just all window dressing, it's trying to get everything in the black, it's not changing the bottom line, if you will, for the most part. Uh, we still have 250,000 plus in the BAN's paydown, if you remember our first, your first motion for the additional 250,000 dollars to go to other legal was originally planned to come from fund balance, but I just want to clean that up, and, uh, move the 250 from BAN's paydown to other legal line. Also, the police private duty, I'm looking to take 235,000 dollars out of the revenue line, and put it on the budget side, uh, the expenditure side of the line, just to clean, clean the books. In addition to this, I'd like an assignment of fund balance, I will determine the accounts, but, uh, 70,000 dollars originally, you had, um, suggested that the 70,000 dollars come from contingency, it is too late for that to occur now, uh, the money won't be spent for this. The money won't be spent for this fiscal year, so I'm asking for an assignment of $70,000 to go into the sidewalk study. Also, I'm asking for an assignment of $38,500 to go into the economic development marketing account. As you all know, Karen has some irons in the fire that won't be consummated this fiscal year. So I'm looking to assign that out of fund balance, let her, just to liquidate some encumbrances and the money for the bottom line, and we'll assign that from fund balance. And $13,000 out of Mike Zarba's budget to go into cartograph training. And I'm also asking for the ability to process any other budget transfer of the $25,000, because there's a lot of moving parts between now and the end of August.
So I'll make a motion to accept the year-end adjustments for year 2019, as presented by Director of Finance?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Carried and, next, moving on to carried and forced. All right, I'm looking for approval of carried and forced, $1,073,716. Park and rec totals, $33,403. Finance office, $176,288. IT, $17,667. Commission on Aging, $20,000. Assessor, $326,738. We have Public Works, 208, $521. Facilities maintenance, $102,999. Police, $63,100, and ambulance of $125,000.
So Greg, just to confirm, these were mostly capital projects that weren't able to be done by the end of the fiscal year?
These are all capital projects that were unable to be done. Some of them are carried and forced numbers being carried again.
Yeah, understood.
Okay, so the total that you have, that we're going to make a motion on?
And Greg, can you address for Dr. Mullin, the finance office capital?
The finance office capital, that was appropriated last budget season for oil tanks and closing costs for some of our bond issues. So those have not yet been consummated. We still have some oil tanks to remove and replace. Police Department and what?
Sereno, I believe.
Yep.
Okay, make a motion to accept the carried and forced for year 2019, as presented by the Director of Finance, for a total of $1,073,716.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next is the adjustments to appropriations approved by the Town Council, September 10th, 2018. Item 13.
As you remember, there was $1.5 million that was appropriated from unassigned fund balance for the purpose of mitigating our potential deficit in fiscal year 18. We did not need that money. It was subsequently appropriated for one-time capital purchases, and there is still $349,677 remaining out of that. So I'm going to need a motion from you to approve the reassignment of some monies into, and also the continued assignment of other financing.
For the total amount, Greg?
For the total amount of $349,677. And again, that's the remaining balance of the $1.5 million.
Okay, motion to approve the action of the Board of Finance to recommend the changes for year-end 2020, reassignment and continued assignment of $349,677.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Was it just somebody opposed?
Dr. Mullin.
Includes my presentation.
Whoa, yeah, B.
That's all straight to the council?
Yep.
I just read.
Oh, you did?
I did.
Oh.
That's what he just did.
Oh.
No, we did add a...
We did A. This is A.
A, you read. Oh, I'm sorry.
Adjustments, reassignment of...
Okay, hang on a second, Greg. So what was A?
A was this.
A was two pages?
Yeah.
Two appropriations approved by the House.
I get that. Okay, so B, that's the changes you just mentioned, wasn't it?
No.
Okay, item B is for discussion of possible action on the Board of Finance recommended changes to the approved for year-end 2020 budget.
Use that under the mayor's?
Mayor's office.
It's the mayor's office, right?
Right.
Wasn't that 13A too?
That's a spreadsheet you passed out to us.
I think very...
Oh, got to be...
No, I think, I think this label 13A was actually 12-something.
There, it's right here. Town council adjustments, standard out.
This one, everybody.
Right here. This must be 13B?
Was it marked?
It was 13B.
And this hour of the night, sorry.
I didn't.
Okay. So do you want to go through this? Okay. I move to, I said this one, four, approve the appropriate, this is A now, right?
This is B.
B. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to approve Board of Finance recommended changes to the approved for year-end 2020 budget, per this attached sheet marked 13B.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Where are we going to get the $250,000 from?
$250,000.
The what?
Those are addition 173, reduction 52, addition 129 is approximately $250,000, right?
Well, this was, this was Board of Finance changed the budget by the categories, right? So they added revenue in the budget, so now we have to determine which account. And they stated in their motion that was for the Teachers Retirement Fund. Then they reduced the capital by $52,500, contractual, I apologize. And then they added $129,041 to personnel.
So this was already approved by the voters, you're saying?
Yes, the categories.
What categories? Have we have to do the details?
Yep, exactly. You got it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion?
Motion to adjourn, Ms. Mullin.
And these, can I just ask?
You didn't vote?
And the particular items that are here were recommended or placed here because and by whom? I understand the contractual, so expenses from the personnel category came about how?
Concentration with the mayor's office.
Okay.
From county?
No, just so it's a clear, transparent...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to adjourn, Ms. Mullin.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Good night.